Okay, we gotta get going. Okay, I call the York County Order this Thursday, June 7th, Davis County Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome everyone here. Start off with the invocation by Commissioner Barrett and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If everyone will bow their head please. Lord, as we come together today to discuss the budget and do the business of people of Davidson County, we just hope that you guide us, give us wisdom, clarity on all the issues. We can't thank you enough for everything that you do for us, we're just not worthy of it. But we just ask that you would guide us today and help us make the decisions that would make you happy and proud. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any recognition, anybody specific today?
No sir, not that I know of.
Thank you. If you haven't already done so, please register if you want to speak at the public address. And we'll move into the adoption, are there any changes for the agenda? Doc, can I have a motion, a second to approve the agenda?
No, no.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, cast your vote.
We need a motion to excuse Mr. Crowell, or is he coming?
I'm right here.
Oh, okay, well, you must have snuck in.
I did, yeah, I had my kids last night and Hannah wanted to be a little...
That's alright. Well, we can get a motion to excuse you anyway.
Well, yeah, I probably do need an excuse, I don't know if there's an excuse for me.
The motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we have Barney W. Hill to speak.
For most governing boards, general obligation bonds are serious business. By the time they are desperate enough to consider that option, the size and content of the bond package is all too obvious. Their last resort was your first resort. You began with the premise that you wanted to borrow and you wanted to borrow a lot and as long as the dollar amount was high enough, you didn't have any strong feelings about the identity of the projects. Now, your expert has delivered, as ordered, a plan for selecting projects, not on the basis of merit or urgency, but instead on the basis of potential for success at the polls if cleverly packaged. Don't let your pride prevent you from abandoning the bond referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Okay, items for decision and information. First item up is continued discussion on the possible bond referendum. Our county manager, Zeb Hannah, will lead this discussion.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have at your places a schedule of general obligation bond reference. We, after we met last week, we got together with staff, Casey, myself, Matt, Jane, Debbie, Chuck, and Jane did some investigation with our bond council about the procedure. If we were all gonna put something on the ballot in the timeframe, we would need to do it. And based off the timeframe and the, we have set up a tentative schedule, but cut into the chase is, we need to start on this June 12th meeting with this resolution piece. As we talked about the last meeting, there's like three meetings that we have to schedule in to get this all done by August 15th meeting so that we can get it on the ballot to the Board of Elections. All that being said, I mean, we'll be glad to answer some questions, but we're probably gonna be coming back with a resolution directing public notice of intent to apply to the local government commission, a resolution authorizing the Director of Finance to apply to LGC and a resolution making certain findings a fact. It's what the next step with will be and that will be on next Tuesday night's meeting unless the board buy consensus or otherwise says no.
Okay, so what you're looking for at this point is just a vote by the board to move forward?
Either, you know, I don't really think you have to take action, it's just, we're gonna put it on the agenda. If you're okay with us putting this on the agenda for approval, this resolution next Tuesday night. I just kinda need a nod of heads or whatever. I don't think it will take a formal vote for us to do that, is that right, folks?
I'm nodding my head.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, on the backside of that calendar, Bond Council was also kind enough to kinda give us a little bit of specifics about what the bond orders may look like, quote unquote, i.e. packages. That's more or less coming from them there and so it actually would be five different packages, with the schools being one, with the Davis Townsley Sewer Line included in that, the Community College Sewer Line, the Parks Peace, the Sports Complex and the Ag Center. So again, this is based off Bond Council's recommendation of kinda how to structure these. Also some prescription, I guess, from the general statutes as to how that needs to be laid out. So, that's what this would somewhat look like. Maybe the language of what they're called might look a little different moving forward. I don't think that's anything for us to worry about there, but that's roughly how it would look. And also went ahead and rounded some of these numbers, typically on bonds, somebody puts exact to the dollar amounts, you know, so I went ahead and rounded them up so we get to a nice even number.
Casey, are you saying that we're not gonna be able to package these like was originally explained to us?
No, we're not.
I don't think there was an appreciation at the time that the presentation was made, that as Casey said, under the North Carolina General Statutes, there's a requirement that certain categories of obligations be distinctly addressed. And so, the presentation that is set out here is the presentation that Bond Council has made. For example, under school orders, those several items there can be grouped together, but that is separate and distinct from the Parks and Recreation Order.
I didn't think you'd be able to group them in with the school, you can't do that because you're using the school to crutch something else through, so I didn't think that was... But I like the way this is laid out.
It's not a big departure from where we started in the winter. I mean, it's outside the sewer items and maybe the agriculture facility, it's not really that big a departure from where we were.
Can the Community College not be part of the school stuff? No.
The Community College could really go one of two ways. It could either be treated as a Community College obligation or as a sewer obligation. There was the election made to treat it as a Community College. I think that Bond Council is going that way because under, again, under the statutory framework, there's a distinct category for Community College that's separate from schools.
Okay, okay, well, and I agree with that, not only that, but our survey that was sent out, it was labeled as the Community College Sewer System, so, and it favored well, I'd hate to change it, but no.
I'd like to have just a question on the Community College Sewer Expansion. When would that have to take place? I'm not talking about if we pass the bond, I'm talking about when would we have to do that? If we were gonna do it?
Within the next eighteen months, if we, from what we've heard at the, some of the board members that are on the EDC Board, you know, they paid money, the foundation of the Community College paid money to get this sped up. And I think they're supposed to be started in nineteen, is that correct?
Where were we gonna pay for this without the bond? I mean, you know, we've got it on here on the bond, but evidently if the committee had already decided and worked it out with the college, how were we gonna pay for it without the bond?
The committee hadn't worked out anything, but...
Yeah, the committee hadn't worked out, like I say, this was just a presentation made to the EDC Board. And when we started talking about it, Dr. Riddlin had met with us and so the timing was, we're probably gonna have to do it at this timeframe, which worked into this bond. If we hadn't been doing the bond, we'd have been probably borrowing the money.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, we would have probably borrowed the money. But since the timing worked in with the bond, it would be cheaper to do it in the bond package.
And the sewer is to serve what?
The other side of the campus.
The link.
Do you have to have a sewer in place before you get that done?
Well, there's old sewer running through there now, or do they just need to be upgraded or something on the bottom side?
I don't believe any on the other side.
There's no sewer on the other side, you'd have, that's to run the sewer. And the other thing is while they're doing the construction work, it'd probably be cheaper to run it while they're doing the construction to the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Casey, what's the, I see on here you got a four percent for the debt on bonds? What is it if you don't have a bond? What is that percentage, that debt?
It just depends, it moves every day. I mean, the market right now, just borrowing straight money, is not much different than getting authorization from the citizens, given whatever the market is in the global economy, it could change tomorrow, so...
Right, but is the bond set at four percent or does that change too?
Me picking what I see right now.
Whatever it is.
I don't know, we'll set that when we start selling debt.
Was there a big difference, was it like four and a half percent when you looked at this? Bond versus non-bonded?
It hasn't moved much, and the other thing too about the general obligation bonds is the collateral piece. So if you go out and borrow the money on your own, you're gonna have to put up some collateral to do some of these things. The collateral when you do general obligation bonds is the pledge of the tax rate, so it makes it a little easier.
Okay, okay.
Makes it a lot easier, actually.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
That's one of the reasons why, and I hate to, you know, I won't belabor it, but remember the deal with the radio systems? You know, the local government commission wasn't real thrilled on us borrowing money to build towers, you know, that maybe just aren't just a steel piece of it. So they asked me, hey, you could do it for the courthouse, and so we just switched them off. Because it's a lot easier to put up the courthouse as collateral than it is, you know, towers for a radio. So there's an example of what I'm... This here, the collateral, is the pledge of the tax rate for the citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so have you got what you need?
I guess is the board amenable to putting this on the twelfth, the resolution to move forward? Alright, then we will replace it.
Any objections?
Okay.
Alright. Alright. Now we're getting into the meat of the product, work session budget for 2018, 2019. I'm sorry? Yeah, we're at last, okay. Zeb, if you'll lead discussion off, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and normally during this session now, you know, we put the budget in your hand. This is staff's best guess as to following some of the direction we got at the retreat. But during this session, there may be items that the board feels strongly that they want to either add to or take out. And so during this session, we take input from the board to make tweaks to the budget to bring back to you on Tuesday night for final approval. So, at this time, like I say, if you've got any questions for department head, staff, or myself, we'll answer any question, but we'll probably return it back to the floor. I think Casey put some adjustments that we found since we put it out there at your place. But other than that, we have nothing else, it's all whatever changes the board would like to see.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just have a moment, I can help you with this packet real quick, if anybody, and this is the one I'm referring to here. There are a handful of changes I just wanna briefly highlight, because there'll be, we'd like to incorporate these in the ordinance that you get on Tuesday night. And real quick, I'll go down the list of these, G.I.S. Department or the Division under IT, and I thought I had included this, so this was a catch on yours part. I had talked about it and talked about it in the budget that we were gonna upgrade our ISRE system and then I didn't include the funds to do it, so that's me including that back in. As you can see, there's what's gotta go in, twenty-nine, five-oh-nine. I'm just upping the alcohol ABC's tax money that we think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna receive next year to cover that. The schools informed me that from their grant agreement with the state, that they are gonna get one additional SRO, this is, so there's no county money involved. This is for the high school, which I should have known was coming, because we've completed that now. That is me including a new deputy too and that with the salary and benefits and everything all included. Again, no county money involved. Support Services, I'm including the funds. And we're just taking a swab guess at this, because we don't exactly know, you know, we've gone through the study with the buildings and any potential handling of hazardous material like asbestos. We may have to abate some things as the year goes on, so there's me including some money for that. I don't know how many, so we just kinda took a guess. Public Health also has got noticed that they will be receiving some additional federal funding to take a part-time position to full-time. So again, no county money involved, it's just moving, they're paying for the difference. And then Veteran Services had some money in next year to replace a staff laptop. That laptop, since that time, has broke. So I've gone through and found money in their budget to go ahead and do it. That's on for Tuesday night to move money around to make that happen. And that's me taking it back out for next year. All told, those changes, if you flip over, you just kinda see what that is gonna look like. Not only the general fund on the next page, you flip over every fund, which we're not adjusting anything in any other funds currently. And then if you turn to here, I just wanted you to see the position counts is changing from those changes there. You've got the additional Public Health position there highlighted in blue and then you've got the additional School Resource Officer position. This is not the position that you approved, I can't remember the name of it.
The investigator.
The special investigator type position? This is not that one, this is an additional SRO for the high school. That position's also included in the sheriff's budget, I have not got wind that we will be receiving grant funds for that one currently, so the county's doing that one for the moment. But anyway, that's what the position council looked like. And then I quickly wanted to just, we had a conversation about school funding. You have what a new, fresh ordinance is going to look like to make all that happen, but I want you to quickly, I just wanna highlight, if you turn to this graph here, several pages back into it. We had a pretty lengthy conversation about school funding at the public hearing meeting, so I wanted to just quickly show you this again, because this is included in our budget document and this actually was included in the presentation, Zeb showed you. That's a history look, that graph there of, you know, eight or nine years of per pupil funding for the three school systems. And I wanted you to see how the ADM's been going down steadily versus what the per pupil funding's been going. And it crossed over each other sometime, right around the time I got here, several years ago. And so I think when the conversation with the manager kinda brought up maybe the other day is, you know, we talked about this, we give them an allotment of twelve-hundred-and-sixteen dollars a kid, you know, but sometimes that allotment, if the ADM goes down, the only adjustment you can really make if it goes down that sharply is with less staff. Because you can't stop the building, the building's there, you gotta pay the bills, you've gotta do certain things. You've got to make your adjustments with your staff. So, you know, and I don't know that the three of them, I don't know if they've been doing that because I don't work there, so I don't know how that works for them, that's for them to decide. But there's where, that's what that looks like. If you flip over to the next page here, quickly see how we kinda, at staff here in our office, kinda look at this funding. You see there's twenty-four thousand, twenty-four and a half thousand students projected next year. Our one percent growth is about the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now, the trick is, you gotta spread that amongst the three of them. Well, when you do that by ADM and considering the county school system is the largest of the twenty-four thousand students, you have to kinda, they get the bulk of the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand is what I'm trying to say. So there is no way around that, you can't give the bulk to Thomasville, you can't give the bulk to Lexington and still work out, you'd have to give the county millions of dollars for it to be worked out pennies-wise and it comes to the exact penny. You can also look to the far right over there on their Type Two capital and you can see what I tried to do, I tried to spread that to one percent even and everybody got one percent. So I try to be as fair as possible and that gets them, everybody to twelve-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and sixty cents. And that's a one percent growth on the per pupil, just like we grew on our property tax. If you flip over to this, lot of numbers here, but I can get to the chase. You know, they came up here and we did some math right here at the podium. If you look to the far left, the adopted budget, you can see there's twelve-hundred-and-two dollars and eighty cents across the board. Their initial request, I say initial, what came to me, probably it comes in different times, but I say this spring, what come to me from the three of them, looked more like this. And you can see it's not even, it's all over the place. So, the counties asked me for twelve-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars a pupil, Lexington twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars and then of course, Thomasville asked me for twelve-fifteen, which is what we ended up giving them. But the requests changed from when we got to the public hearing, so we did, you can't give, you can't have one, you know, the county school system said they'd like to have four percent, one said two, you can't do it that way or you won't get the per pupil even. You can see if you take two percent for, I think it's Lexington and Thomasville, and four for the county schools, you can kinda see what that looks like. So it gets all back out of whack. If you move over here to revise requests and you give them two percent each one of them, you can get it back in line, but that two percent ends up costing another six-hundred thousand dollars. So, that's why we, you know, we tell them, we grow, we're gonna give you what we grow and another six-hundred thousand dollars would be a stretch for us. So you can see the difference between that and the proposed. I just wanted to highlight that, because it's not as simple as, can I give you two percent and then the other one say four or three? Once those percentages get off track, the per pupil will never be in line. The backside of this page, this whole packet, I put this in here for you all and I will open it up here in just a second, because I think, I mean, this is your time to have anything you want to discuss. This is just what was left off the list from the retreat that I can remember. And some of the things we've, as you can see, we've already included some funding for some of these items, some we have not, so, but this is open for whatever, even if it's not on this list, feel free to bring it up. And that's it for me, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, opening it up for commissioners, any questions, statements, or?
When you're talking about those three school systems, you know, making the adjustments that you did to make it come out equally on the per pupil, how do you do that considering that, I think Lexington's the only one of the three that's holding fairly steady on their ADM and county's going down, Thomasville's going down? The way you're doing it, it's not penalizing Lexington for them maintaining their attendance while the other two are going down, is it?
Well, not per pupil, because they're all getting twelve-fifteen. In a year where two, you got three of them and that's, you know, this year if you see that ADM, it actually leveled off, started, it didn't go down again. But if, in a year where you've got the three of them and you're trying to spread three-hundred-and-fifty grand, if somebody's going down and the other two are going up, the one that's going down is gonna end up resulting probably in a loss in per pupil. Or the per pupil may go up, but the total funding may go down slightly. And that's what's happened to Thomasville a couple of times. It actually happened to Lexington last year, it just depends on who's getting the students that year. They may see a little bit of total money down, but the twelve-hundred-and-fifteen dollars is more than they got per pupil last year.
Thank you.
Now Casey, you said this back page is these five or six different items that we discussed but are not in the budget right now.
Correct. Well, some of them are, the two that, in the middle column there, Mr. Trull, we are funding the rescue squads, we're just not funding them to the tune of a hundred-and-twenty-five grand that they requested. Trip as well, you know, is asking for, and I think they've got a handout here in your, that they handed out this morning. We went to sixty-four, not seventy-three, six-sixty, or three-sixty. What we funded with the sixty-four was the laptop and the taxes, basically, that he asked to be done. And the laptop will be one time, we pay for that laptop next year and then that sixty-four will go down the following year.
But the sixty-four thousand, I'm sorry? I just, I had a question on that, what was the increase from the previous year?
It was about fifty, I can get that in a second, it was like... I can get that, go ahead, I can get that in just a second.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Trull, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I was, when we look at the opioid case manager position, that's the one that was requested by our health department and I think it was cut out of our budget. And I'd like for us to look at that one more time, because I think we got, or I think we can get a grant that'll probably do a lot of, pay for a lot of this. And, you know, for so long, and the reason I think I'm bringing it up now is we got a letter the other day from the Board of Health recommending it again. The Board of Health, and I'm a member of Board of Health, so I was sitting there. But Board of Health's made up of doctors, veterinarians, all kinda health. And they, and they, they don't understand why we don't become proactive in some of these things instead of reactive. You know, we, we, for instance, we, if a guy out here overdoses, we can get, what was it, Narcan? Narcan, we get that, so we react to that, to try to help him. Or if, if we find a lady in the backseat of the car passed out, kid sitting there, we call social services, they picked up that kid and tried to handle the kid, but it's a reaction thing. We reactive, we need to be proactive and I think the people in Davidson County, and I'm talking what some of the medical doctors even asked me. Why don't we try this for a year, this, I like the fact that we're calling the opioid case manager position, you know, I think I made a mistake when I said it was a needle exchange program, which basically, that's what it is. But you know, Walmart gives you a card to come in and get something off, so they join in. The needle exchange program is the fact that we can tell this guy or this lady that is, we know she's taking drugs and all, we know she's an addict. We're saying, come in and talk to us, go into our programs and we will, we'll give you a new needle because, I mean, because you're using dirty needles anyway. Don't mean we're gonna give everybody a needle, it means we're gonna get them in there with the idea that they're gonna get something free for coming in and then we're gonna put them through our programs. I think we need to try this one year and I think the health, the the whole health organization thinks that we need to do it and the doctors, the, they don't understand why we don't. They don't understand why it was marked out and I tried to explain to them that it was just marked out during our budget workshop and that it might be put back in. And that's why I would like for us to look at that again, there's sixty-three thousand dollars and I don't think, I don't think it'd cost sixty-three thousand, it might not cost a little bit of nothing, it depends on what kinda grants we got. And if nothing else, I'm, if nothing else, I think we need to try it one year. I think we owe it to the citizens of Davidson County to try it, I really do. To be proactive about something and try to, we've got an opioid epidemic that we're gonna be talking about, I don't know about today, but within the next little while, we're gonna talk about what we're gonna do about that, but I think we need to show the people of Davidson County we're doing something, we're trying to do something to take care of what we can with this epidemic.
Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of simplicity, would you like for us to just start at the top and work our way down on these issues?
I think that'd probably be a good idea, let's do that. I think we need to go ahead and let's go ahead and put the opioid case manager position first, since we've already started that discussion with Commissioner Trull. Does anyone have a response?
I have come in.
Commissioner Trull?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Trull. The opioid case manager position, I think is essential to our county. One of the responsibilities that we have as county commissioners is for the health of our county. And it has been proven over and over and over again that this needle exchange program has reduced hepatitis C in the counties that have enacted this by a tremendous percent. It's not to supply free stuff to addicts without any consequences and that's what Commissioner Trull was saying. It provides an opportunity to get those folks in. It provides an opportunity to get those folks in, to expose them to a program that might get them off of this stuff altogether, and, uh, make them productive citizens again. But in the, in the process, what it does is it eliminates the possibility of a, a dirty needle causing Hep C in another person. I think that, um, we have recently seen, um, things coming down from the federal government. Um, I received a call the other day wanting to know what we had done, uh, in our county, um, proactive, uh, to combat the opioid crisis. Uh, we have had, um, the seminar that we did, we had about seventy people, the meeting that we did, and we had several ideas that came out of that meeting. And we have not moved forward on most of those ideas, they have been just languishing, we have not been proactive, um, especially compared to some of the other counties. Some of the other counties are steps ahead of us in, in opioid prevention. We are a subject to getting a, a lot of different grants. Um, this position could also help us to get the help program that we looked at from Nash County, uh, in our county. And I don't know how many of you remember that, if you don't, I can get the guy back up here to, to talk to us, but that program has, has really been successful. In reducing the number of, uh, uh, people that's going through our jails. And that's a, that's something that we're concerned with, um, as well. So, I, I'm with Commissioner Trull on this, I think that, that, that it's not just for one year, but I think that if we put this in there, it, we won't have to worry about it next year, because we will see tremendous results out of, out of doing this. And it is something that we would be proactive on, and, uh, then we could a- at least expand on that. The, one of the things that, that it can lead to is getting crisis intervention training for all of the, uh, law enforcement officers. And we have gotten that, I think Thomasville has gotten most of their folks, but Lexington and Davidson County have not. But with a, a, a plan like this and moving forward like this, it would be a good opportunity for us to get all those folks trained so that we could intervene, um, between the arrest and the jail, and try to get these folks some help instead of putting them in jail. Which according to the statistics, the jail is the, the largest mental health facilities we have in the state. And, uh, we don't need that, we need to reduce the number of people that's going to our jails if they don't belong in those jails, and this position will help us do all of that. Thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
Well, of course, uh, this is a subject very dear to my heart, and I'm gonna respond to it, it's, it's clearly a reactive response, it's not a proactive response. This sixty-three thousand dollars would go a long way in providing fo- more foster care for, for people who may end up being addicted to drugs. And the numbers that you're hearing, and, and the claims accolades for, uh, the claims of fame are ridiculous, because nobody has a, a clue to what those numbers are, because the HIPAA law prevents you from doing a case-by-case study. And, and, eh, all you got to do, if you think we're being proactive, you think these other counties are being proactive, is walk out on your front porch, and if you think the situation's better than it was, say, five years ago, then I'd vote for this. But if you're gonna do something like this, we've already got, for example, Daymark, you've got Carter Innovations that have access to different programs. If, if you're gonna do something like this, it needs to be done within the scope of those programs that are already providing these services. And if you, if you're misguided enough to think that somebody's gonna come and get a clean syringe, and you, and, and, and inject himself with dirty drugs, and not gonna pull it out of their arm and hand it to the next person over, you're ju- it's ridiculous. And with regards to hepatitis, you don't know if that's coming from needles or bodily fluids. I mean, you have no idea, because you don't have access to the medical records that we need to identify, clearly identify where the cause is coming from. As for me, I think the money could be utilized in much better areas for true, uh, proactive responses, and that's just my opinion, I've been around it a long time.
I'm responding.
Shell, I, I will, I'm one of them misguided people.
Well.
Because I, I, I take a position to that.
Well, if you can show me the clear numbers, I'll, I'll be glad to look at it.
I can show you one thing that's proactive to start off with, you might pull out that needle out of one arm and put it in another arm, but one of them had a clean needle, one had a clean needle. So, uh, if, if we have this program.
Well, we got dirty drugs, Commissioner McCle- I mean, Commissioner, uh, Trull, are we gonna provide them with clean drugs next, is that their next step, or are you drawing the line in the sand?
Narcon, we can say, listen, if you overdose, we'll give you Narcon, so, uh, we're not helping them people, we're not helping, we're reacting.
Do you think a person who passes out from drugs is gonna have the ability to inject themselves with Narcon?
No, no.
Not the people I've seen.
But I'm saying, we're providing the law enforcement and, and EMS and all, we're providing them with Narcon, so if somebody does vomit, that they can, can save, so why don't we, we try something?
But it's not, providing them with Narcon is not part of the sixty-three thousand dollars.
No, no.
Now, that's a different, that's a different subject altogether.
This is, this is, instead of waiting till we find somebody that's, that's out of this world on these, on these drugs, instead of waiting to try to do something like Narcon for them, or to take that kid out of the car and let social services watch after his kid while we put the woman in jail for overdosing, why don't we go to this woman first? When we find out that she's taking drugs and say, listen, come in and, and let's talk about this, let's show you our programs. If you come in, we'll give you a free, uh, a, a, a new needle, uh, and, and just get her in there. You know, we might not give a needle away at all, but we gotta get them in there and put them on a program.
Well, the sixty-three thousand dollars could be better spent, and what you're telling these young people out here that, that we don't, we can't get out of a dangerous environment, because we don't have foster care to send them to, is, you guys hold on. When you become a full-blown addict and adult, we're gonna have some money for you, we're gonna help you then, and that's what you're telling them, and that's why it's continuing to get worse, but nobody wants to hear me. You know, I've tried to tell, send this message, there's two things we could do to fix the problem with opioids, and, and, and improve it greatly, but nobody wants to hear it, because it's too much work, we wanna do what looks good, what feels good. And, and, and it doesn't work, it's not working. And at some point, I don't know, whether it's got to affect you, or a loved, a person in your house before you wake up and say, what we're doing is not working. And there's a new approach that needs to be taken, and we're just not willing to do it.
Well, it is not misguided, and there is evidence. If you choose to ignore the evidence, then that's one thing. If you will do the research, and if you will look at programs that have been incorporated for longer than one year, and you see what the results are in the reduction of hepatitis C, and in the reduction of the opiates, um, problem, then you will find out that this is in fact an effective proactive, um, issue. We can't, as a county, just sit on our behinds and not do anything about this. That's what we've been doing, we haven't done anything, uh, as a county. We have an opportunity here to do something, and you can say all day long, Commissioner Shell, that it don't work, but all the statistics everywhere prove you wrong. All the statistics say that the needle exchange program does reduce Hep C and does help with the opioid crisis. Now, you can ignore that if you like, but that's what proven statistics show. And you talk about having somebody involved in a program, I have, twice. So, I mean, I know what the situation is too, and, and I think that we have to do something, we're talking, we're talking about a very limited amount of money. Sixty-four thousand dollars, or whatever it is, um, that's gonna, that's sixty-three thousand, that's gonna cost the county to look at what a, an option might be. And like, uh, Commissioner Trull says, if at the end of the year, you're looking for evidence, you say, show me the evidence, well, you look at it at the end of the year, and if there's no evidence that it works, then we can always take it out. But I think you'll find, and I don't know whether you're scared that you'll find that it'll work, or whether you just don't wanna see whether it'll work or not. But to try something that is new to this county, to try to improve the health of this county, and to try to impact the opioid crisis, I think is something that we need to consider.
I don't, I don't appreciate your, your, your personal attack on me, Commissioner, but, uh, just because it's your opinion, don't make it the right opinion. And, and, and let me tell you something, I've been involved with this a lot of years, and you've been involved with it too, and I don't see the problem getting, getting better. And if you wanna talk about statistics, go out here in the public and talk to the public, because they'll tell you, the ones that have to deal with it on a daily basis, that what we're doing is not working, it's a feel-good measure, it's nothing but posturing, and I'm tired of those things. And if you wanna talk about the county has done nothing, look at the amount of money that we spend every year on opioid addiction, and the problems we face with opioid addiction. So, I mean, that, eh, eh, you can make it personal if you want to, this is not personal. This is so, a belief that I have, and I have a right to my belief, just like you do, and I don't appreciate you demeaning me, eh, but just because I have a difference of opinion.
Commissioner Shell, I didn't.
The people's gonna vote, I mean, the commissioners are gonna vote on this whatever way they want to, I think, I think we've pretty much had enough discussion on it.
I don't. If you don't mind me replying to your comment.
Go right ahead.
Okay. First of all, I did.
Do it, you can do it in a way where you don't demean and attack the person, okay?
I didn't think that I said any.
I didn't, when I, when I gave my thing, Commissioner, did I mention your name, eh, before you mentioned mine? No, I kept it along the subject line in the way that I believed, and you wanna come back and try to discredit and, and degrade that what my belief is, I have a right to those beliefs. And you can, you can respond to that without being attacking.
I did not attack you in any way, you had made a statement, and, um, Commissioner Trull can attest to this, that you said that the people who thought other than that were misguided. I simply said that we weren't misguided.
That's what I was saying.
I also said that the statistics that are out there and that you look at will show, uh, as a matter of fact, that it is effective. And I wasn't criticizing you whatsoever, the only thing I said about you that you could have taken personally was you can choose to ignore the statistics if you like. And that's the only thing I said, and that's the only way that I was being personal, I did not personally attack you in any way. I do not personally attack your beliefs, we were discussing whether or not to, to fund this position, and I was speaking to the positive effects of funding this position, a- and, and that is all.
Well, we wasted a lot of money, and, and the, and the self, and, and I'm not, Commissioner Trull, I want you to know, I'm not responding to what you said, you got a right to believe what you believe, and you got a right to support what you, you support. It's just the fact that so do I, and, uh, when you start talking about statistics, the hypocrisy of that is ridiculous, because nobody can credibilize those statistics. If you could, then we'd be better off, we would know what we're dealing with, the HIPAA law keeps you from doing such things, and you're generalizing with the statistics that we're using, and they're not, they're not getting us anywhere. Because you can't go in there and, and, and study case by case, as, as whether or not these programs work for the individual, and that's my point. But we continue to expand and expand, and you can't handle the targets you got now. You're setting yourself up for failure, because we have a target out here that we're trying to deal with, but we want to expand and dilute the resources to add more things to it, and we can't handle what we got here. You talk about opioid, uh, uh, use, and that addicted or should be, or mentally ill, well, what's that do to our prosecution? You can't prosecute someone that's mentally ill, so you just open the doors, let them all out, if you think they're all mentally ill, because probably about ninety-five percent of the people in jail are, are addicted. So, I mean, we don't look at the far-reaching effects of decisions that we're making, and we're becoming a society that's, we want to, uh, that, we want to decriminalize, we want to do away with it, and eventually, that's what's gonna happen. You're not gonna have that many laws, you're not gonna have detention facilities, and it's sort of like where we're at today, when we got parents that's scared to discipline their children. And, and, I mean, it just, it, it goes on and on, and we want to expand and spend more money, and we can't even handle what we've got now. We need to focus those dollars on what the programs and what we're doing now is. But I mean, that's just, that's just the way I feel.
Well, and, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, all, all we're saying is, let's try something, let's try something, we, we, we're not, we're spinning our wheels, like you said, everything you said is true. So we've been spinning our wheels, so why would we be afraid, be afraid to try something else? You know, uh.
I just think we'd get more rewards, Commissioner Trull, if we spent the money in foster care and tried to help these kids before they get to that point, instead of spending it on plain, plain needles.
Help them before they get to this point is what we want to do, but in foster care now, what we're doing is, as I said, and this was just an example now, it, we're taking the kid out of the backseat of the car, when we could take the mom into jail, put her in jail, that's what we're spending our money for now.
But she's addicted, so she's gonna be mentally ill.
That's right, so we need to, we need to do something with this woman, we need to try to put her in a program to try to help her, and, uh.
I heard someone, Commissioner Tr- uh, Trull, talk about long-term treatment, yeah, there's long-term treatment if you got ten thousand dollars a month.
Well, it's true.
The level, the level of treatment is based on a person's pocketbook, and we got to do something about that, we're not looking at the real things that are really killing us when it comes to, to addiction, and handling mental illness problems, we're just, we're not doing it, we're turning our back on it.
But you don't think we need to give it a try?
I don't think we need to, I think that we need to take that money and prioritize and use it in areas that, that serve as preventions at an earlier age. I think that's what we're missing the vote, just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Commissioner.
I'd like to see statistics, uh, on both sides of this, I've been reading here while this discussion. I read statistics against the program that says it's not successful, and I read some that says it is, so, and it seems to be statistics on both sides of, uh, every issue, pretty much. So, uh, I, I'm like Commissioner Shell, I'm not ready to do something till I can see that.
We're not gonna do anything about it anyway.
I'm sorry?
So we won't do anything about it.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, before we even remotely talk about moving forward, I gotta do a little bit more reading, I guess, on, uh, online or whatever, but, but I'm like you, I mean, it's hard to, uh, there's plenty of other places that offer benefits for people. I guess if you wanted to do the exchange, needle exchange, could you not do it inside the jail, because that's where a lot of, uh, a lot of people come in with drug addictions.
You could do it in the jail, but you wouldn't be putting them through a program to try to get them off of this stuff.
Well, you're not gonna put them through a program anyhow unless they wanna go through a program, correct?
I don't know. Really.
Would, a- and I've just got a question to that, would the jail not be a good place to put them through a program? Because my wife, uh, goes to the jail regularly to have a service there, she's got the, got a girl in there right now that said she's been on drugs for, since she was teenager, thirteen, she's in her twenties. She's been in seventeen days before she even was able to sleep at night, she wants out of the system, and she, but, but there's no place to go. When she gets out, she can't even go back to her parents. She, we, we need, I, I think something that would probably be more beneficial is if we could put a program in the jail to where they can go through a program while they're there, while they're clean. And then have a facility that they can go to afterwards, a facility, if we really wanna target, um, helping people get turned around, I think we need a facility to be able to treat them. Um, a- another issue even for a facility that you can take women that are, uh, pregnant. We in DSS see so many children come in addicted to drugs, and then we, the taxpayers, bear the burden of taking care of the child, and then we take it into, into, uh, foster care. And we've, we've got one particular, uh, incident that I'm aware of, that the lady's had ten children, and all ten have been through DSS, and all ten have came into our care. And it's drug abuse, and they have been, you know, some, some of them are different, different times, they're required to stay in pediatric care, but for years after, they have, they have issues for years from being in the mother's womb. But for years after, they have, they have issues for years from being in the mother's womb with a, with a mother that is using. And if we could get these mothers in a facility during that time and have them off, that's where you're creating an issue of change with the children. You know, when they're born, to, to stop, to, to make a big difference. I, I think facility and treatment centers would do a lot more good for the county.
And I agree. And that's, that's one of the things that this position would do. It's a help program that is in Nash County. They have both faith-based and, and that are free facilities to send people to. And they have paid facilities. In Nash County, they, these facilities are actually calling the Sheriff's Department, telling them that they've got beds open for people to go to. And they, that's what they do. And that's what this person could do. They could, this person could facilitate that. And to get those people placed in a facility. And so far as ten thousand dollars a month, Throw-Ass in, in, um, in Durham is free. All you have to do is go.
Who, who pays for the Throw-Ass program?
It's not, you don't pay for it. And it's, it's-
It's not a county?
No, it's not a county. It's a nonprofit that's handled it by, by itself.
Mr. Waiton List-
Mr. McCullough, I think you're talking about Trosa.
Trosa, that's right. Yeah.
Trosa is a business type thing where like the gentleman would maybe move furniture for folks. Uh, so you-
No, the, uh, my grandson's there. So I know exactly what it is.
Well, I, I was rep- replying to Commissioner Jarvis, but that's how they get their funds to do it.
There are other facilities, faith-based facilities, that, that, that people can be placed. If they don't have any money, they can go there. There are some places that accept Medicaid. So if the people are on Medicaid, they can get in with the Medicaid. But that's what this person does is to find the proper place for them to be able to go. And that's just one of the things. But like Commissioner, um, Yates said, you know, we need to get more information for, I guess, for everybody. Uh, because there seems to be some confusion as to about what the statistics actually show.
I would also like to see how many counties in the state are actively in this program. Um, and the other thing, would it, would it not be better to take that money and put it to a entity that will start a Trosa or a, you know, I'm, I'm just using that for an example. So we would have a treatment. You say they're nonprofit, but we don't have them. Apparently, we don't have enough of them here.
We've got a twelve-bed, I think it's a twelve-bed, it might be more than that, facility in Daymark that we've just gotten this, this past couple of years. And that was-
And that's great.
Through the efforts of Cardinal. But, um-
How many, how many beds are filled with that twelve?
Huh?
How many beds are filled with that twelve?
I, I'm not sure it's twelve.
I think it is.
It might be twelve. It's, it's twelve. How many?
How many beds do, how many beds do they have available now?
I couldn't tell you that. You have to call. It changes every day.
Steve, also, this, this case manager position we're talking about, this person wouldn't go into places like the jail or even go to the courts if, if part of the sentence that somebody gets, uh, they'll, they'll take that person too. So they go into the jails, they go to wherever these people are. They go to the hospitals.
Is that a long-term, uh, facility here at Daymark?
No.
No, no.
No.
No, that's a, Daymark is primarily detox.
Okay.
But there are, you know, like these faith-based facilities, they run from anywhere from thirty days to ninety days to six months.
Do we have any of those in our county?
No.
Uh, we don't.
But Commissioner Jarvis, one of the problems that I see, um, cause I've been dealing with stuff as well, if you go to a rehab center that is nearby and you can be doing really well, but you will, let's say you're on a job site and you, you stop at a gas station. And you're walking in and there's your dealer right there that you have been buying from. And he, he bends your ears like Satan in a ear. You're right back to where you started. And so the, what I have found, the rehab centers that work, they work when you go away. So like Black Mountain Rehab for us, you know, if you go there, most likely you're not gonna run into those people up in Asheville area or down in Wilmington. Um, you have to get away from your surroundings and your people. The problem with it is when they come back. If they do like a two-year stint, then it, I think it seems to be a little bit better. But if you do six months or less and then you come back to your surrounding, you're right back in the same group of people. They don't, they don't just block everybody from the past away. And, and so for that, I, I don't know that us having a local place here like that where they're out and about would be beneficial. But I do agree with what you're saying. But that's just my partake on it.
To follow up from what you said Commissioner Jarvis, the list of the counties that are doing this is great. But I want to see the statistics from that county. And how many has went through treatment? And how many has went through treatment successfully? I think that's where Commissioner Shale's going. You can send them off to treatment, but who follows up with them after treatment to see if they've succeeded in, uh, and again, I guess you could say have they followed up with them in, in five years to see if it's successful? And they're still off of drugs. So, um, those statistics that you're asking for, that's what I'd like to see added to that as an addendum. So I can research it.
And most of those, most of those, uh, are voluntary, um, voluntary participation. Those who require involuntary commitment, there's just not a lot of options out there. And the ones that are are full and co- very costly.
If I may, of everything that we've got on this list, I'm probably split more on this than any of them. I remember when, when we first brought up this particular subject, uh, my, my first reaction was, you know, pretty much mirrors what you said. Uh, I listened to a lot of people that believe in this position. Uh, I think a lot of it is, I know you talked about it being, uh, for show, I think one of the expressions you use for show, to show everyone, oh, look what we've done. We've added this position. And as we know, once you add a position in government, it doesn't disappear. So I'm not sure adding it, trying it for one year, we're, we're stuck with it forever. Uh, cause you're not gonna go into next year and tell that person, I'm sorry, you don't have a job. Stats don't back up that you're carrying your weight and it's working. But I do know that there's a problem. Now, I know Fred has researched it extensively as far as the Nash County situation. So, I mean, I'm not totally against, uh, what this position may do. But I also appreciate everything that you said. You know, as far as, um, I mean, I, the se- the six and a half years I worked for social services, I mean, other than Black Mountain and a couple of others, there's just not a lot out there for people to go to to get their help. And I know Dale Moorfield, is he here today? Dale knows, he deals with this every day. You know, where do the social services send their people? When the, when the kids are taken, as Fred said, when the children are taken? You know, where, where, where do you send parents when you're working with them to try to get them their help? And there's not a lot out there. And we, we really don't know if this is gonna work. There's a lot of information we need as, as though Commissioner Yates said. Uh, but this is one where I can see both sides. And I can understand where both sides are coming from. Uh, cause I've, I've kinda, you want to get all the help you can. But then when you sit there and if you're in, in the system, in social services, and you just kinda, you never see, you see that big light at the end of the tunnel and it's addiction. And it's like nothing you do, nothing you see works. I, I distinctly remember Kathy Hitchcock standing there three years ago. The, the, uh, program director for, uh, foster care and child protective services saying she's not aware of a single case where, uh, people entered into, uh, what's the place out here on Fifth Avenue? Uh...
Oh, you're talking about, huh, on the wheel.
Methadone. People that get into the methadone clinics, you know, it's almost like there's their substitute. And it's like they never, they're supposed to be dosed down, but they're, they're hardly, they're never hardly dosed down. And, uh, and, uh, she was telling it from the heart, from being in the system. And of, uh, there's, there's a lot of truth to that. And, uh, I just wonder, I just wonder in this situation, and without trying it, you'll never know, um, will it help some or is it just more window dressing to say, look what we're trying to do here? And I'd like to see some of the stats like Commissioner Yates is talking about. Uh, you know, we need to track down some more stats and see if there's another, how many counties have this position in place? And if, if it's effective and if it's working. But my, my first reaction though leans toward what Commissioner Shale has been saying. But I can, I can certainly, I can certainly see it from both sides. And I don't question the sincerity of anybody that's on both sides. I think they mean what they're saying. And they're genuine in their beliefs.
You know, I, I don't put it on the spot, but this is a workshop. Lillian's here. Maybe, maybe she could give you some of those stats you're talking about from other counties. I don't know. Uh, she might know how many counties are using it or, or have tried it or, or what.
Good morning Commissioners. Um, I can tell you that since, um, what we're leading with and what I keep hearing everybody say is needle exchange. And I would like to take some ownership for the responsibility of that. Because when I spoke with you all and I talked about this position, I knew that would be the most controversial piece of it. So that's kind of what we talked about. But things that we have hit on are what this position would do with case management and other things. When I was sitting out there listening to you guys, I thought to myself, if there's an opioid problem in Davidson County, who do we go to? And I couldn't really think of who that person would be. But that's how I envision this position. So to answer the question specifically, what other counties have this position, I don't know that another county has this exact position. I can tell you that there are twenty-six needle exchange programs in other counties, but they are run in a variety of different ways. Forsyth County does one out of a church. And they do it with, um, harm reduction. Wilson County does it at their health department. People come into the health department and do it there. Those are two examples. As far as getting, um, I understand the frustration with the hipolols on the individual level with who has what diseases. But in the aggregate, North Carolina does have numbers on how many cases of hepatitis C they are. You can't track it to an individual, but hepatitis C is a communicable disease. So every time that somebody tests positive for it in North Carolina, it is recorded.
It's rec- uh, Lillian, that, that means it was transferred, uh, needle?
You're absolutely right. Absolutely, yes sir.
So we don't have a breakdown. That's what I'm saying. I, I know there's, there's hepatitis picked up by dirty needles. I mean, I'm not a fool. But we don't have a breakdown. And, and I think that's one of the problems. I'm just using it as an example of, of other problems we have when we start talking about statistics. That you can't qualify them. Because anybody can lump them all together just to prove their case. And we don't have any way, the citizens don't have a way, and the government don't have a, any way to distinguish them. That's just like, you know, when we talk about these clean needles, we're already, and people won't accept this, but it's a fact, we're already providing drugs for those needles. Because we refuse to address the debit cards that these people get under their social security. And they go out and buy a little, little minimal purchase and get forty-dollar advancement run down to the corner. We refuse to do anything about that. We should do something about that. But we don't want to do anything about that because it requires too much work. It's too much headache for our legislators to really address the cause of a lot of addiction. We don't want, but nobody wants to hear me on that. Because they don't like what I'm saying. It doesn't fall in with their agenda promoted of increasing the programs. And, and that's, that's my frustration.
Oh, yes.
Because if I saw some effort really put on the, on the causes, you know, I can, might, I, I might be more flexible when it comes, okay? Now, we've got that taken care of. Let's see if we can address it on here. But those, that's the most important issues. And while we're, what I think would be a waste of money, it might help a few. But total overall, while we're doing, spending money here, we're ignoring what's in, what's increasing the problems every day. And that's my frustration. It's not with somebody trying to broker, trying to do something. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to people trying to do something. I'm just saying that some, we're not focusing the money where, where I believe after all these years, that it would do the most, have, we would have the most benefit.
Lillian, you can get, uh, from these twenty-six counties, you'd be able to get the statistics of, of, uh, what kind of effect this needle program had on the hep C cases in that county, wouldn't you?
Well, yes sir. In some ways, the di- the difficulty is it's so new. I mean, needle exchange is a very new program. And again, I said, as I said, we led with needle exchange. I knew it would be the most controversial part. But that is just such a small part of the hope for this position. Um, when you look at hepatitis C numbers, the reason that people are correlating it so heavily with drug use is that the numbers have gone up five hundred percent since two thousand and nine. And that's when we started really seeing an opioid problem. So that's why the natural progression is to link it back to drug use. Because what else has changed since two thousand and nine? Aside from the increase in hep C, the, um, rate of IV drug use. But I'll be happy to check with those folks and see what kind of things that they're coming down. But Davidson County is not alone in this. Um, getting needle exchange at the county level has been very contentious, much like here. So even the programs that are in place, I don't, I don't know of any that have been run by a county or in a local health department that have been operating for a full year yet. Because it was hard to get them there. I mean, this is a difficult thing. And, um, as, uh, Commissioner Truell said, being on the Board of Health, you know, our board sees this as, they look at the statistics, they see the, the importance of the problem that we have here. And they see this as a re- as a way to help at, at our local level. Do I, does anybody think that this is gonna fix the whole problem? Absolutely not. But we think that it is a way to start. And again, have that one person who works for Davidson County, that would be the central point for the opioid problem. So if you had a question about treatment, if you had a question about needle exchange, if you had a question about foster care, this person could work with all the programs and be that contact. They would obviously have to work with Daymark. I mean, you can't ignore Daymark. They are the leaders. Hopefully, they would get in with our methadone clinic treatment facilities and talk with them too. I mean, there, this, I wish that we could lay it all out exactly how it would work. But guys, this would be breaking the mold. I don't think that this position exists anywhere exactly in this way, in the state of North Carolina.
Have you been to the state of South Carolina or Virginia or anywhere else? Have you looked to see if it's anywhere?
No, sir. No, I mean, you know, the way that the office, the health department works under the Office of State Personnel. So we have job descriptions that we can fill. But, you know, what they actually do in Davidson County as a health director and what the health director in Forsyth County does, two entirely different things. But we're all under the same job. So even if you find the job title, when you look down into the job duties in different areas, they're quite different. And that's the flexibility we have locally. It just makes it hard to find that exact position anywhere.
The, uh, Nash County, their, um, this whole program that they run, and it's, it's been very successful. We can actually get the numbers on that. But, um, essentially, that's what the person does. It's a person from the health department that's doing the case management, that's interviewing the people whenever they come in and placing them in these other facilities. And we can get a list of those facilities. But there's about twenty, twenty facilities that they have, some nonprofit, some faith-based, and some where you pay. But that's statistics.
I'm gonna go back to the jail thing again. To me, you'd have all the customers you need right over there. You wouldn't have to walk into the health department. You got a, you got a pretty full slate of customers that you could try to get help for addiction and other things there. But, um, anyhow, I'll think about it. The needle exchange program, other countries that have tried this already? I've been reading a little bit on the internet again, so, yeah.
They always scare you.
So you say it's new here, is it, is it new?
It's new to be legal in North Carolina. To be honest, I used, um, all right, I didn't used to. The previous director of North Carolina Harm Reduction, his name's Robert Childs, he's, um, from, I don't even wanna, he's, he's not from the United States. He came here and he's very honestly told me that he's been doing needle exchange in North Carolina for years, but it was illegal. So when it was illegal, there was no data at all on it. It was underground. They were just trying to help people not spread diseases. So it's been going on here for quite some time, but the legality of it is quite new. Um, in other places, I think in West Virginia, it was legal before it was here because they had more of a problem. Um, but it, it's been legal, but it has been going on for years.
And that's what I'm reading. Um, and again, I can see both sides of it. I can read both sides of it on the internet here. But one side I'm reading says there's no statistic, uh, statist- statistics, nevermind, you know what I'm saying. Statistical, um, affirmation, uh, that supports that, that needle exchange would improve HIV. It's more an HIV instead of hepatitis.
That was probably, I, I don't mean to, uh, assume, but ten years ago HIV was the problem.
It was a year old.
Really? Okay. Well, what we're seeing in North Carolina is the, the bigger problem is hepatitis C. But yes, HIV is one of them too. It's just the hep C rates are germe- germely-
But they said there was no statistical information supporting that a needle exchange program helps any of this. But they said there was no statistical information supporting that a needle exchange program helps any of this. It's just, and this was out of Illinois, so I would think they would.
Chicago has a significant problem, yes sir.
Right, so they've probably been doing it a lot longer than we have, you know, so anyhow, there you go.
Have you seen the, have you seen the articles out of California with regards to the needle exchange program? And the pictures of them laying on the sidewalk injecting themselves?
I've seen some pretty horrific pictures, I saw a needle in a pregnant woman's belly.
Yeah, have we looked at the fact that, uh, if you give a kid a needle? And I know it's justifiable paraphernalia in North Carolina now that allows you to do that. And he overdoses, what's the liability of the county gonna be?
There is no liability, but there's a lot of personal angst on it, I'll be honest with you. As someone who is, you know, pushing for this program so to speak, because the data that I've seen and my health director colleagues and the public health professionals at the state say this program works. But yes sir, there's a lot of angst to think about something like that.
You think there should be a liability?
Do I think it should be a liability, I think.
Then think about your child. And you're doing everything you can to prevent that child from doing drugs and he goes off and somebody gives him a needle to inject himself. You think there should be a liability? He's gonna get it anyway, we all know that, but we're not part of that.
I understand that, I just, as a public health director, all I can say.
I understand.
Well, I just, I have to listen to what my state colleagues and my other colleagues say, and they say that this works. And legally, the lawyers have hashed it out and there is no legal liability.
So when you, when you talk about the problems we face, and, and I'm not putting you on the spot because I understand what your position is and you do a great job, okay? And you ought to look into these things.
Yes sir.
But when you start talking about the monies, I mean, it's just sixty-three thousand dollars, it's trapped, okay? But let's talk about, and Scott, you may be able to add something to this, let's talk about methadone and suboxone. I mean, that was, let's try that too. We can't, in Davidson County, with all the professionals we have in Davidson County, we can't find someone to administer methadone and suboxone, I've raised this for the last three years I've been on this board.
Yeah, I understand.
And nobody's addressed it. Yet it costs the taxpayers here fifty-four thousand dollars, around fifty-four thousand at that time, maybe more now, a year, just for transportation. Well, that would almost cover the cost of this right here if we, if we use the money the way it's supposed to be used and not just throw our hands up and send these people to Concord to get methadone at twelve dollars a clip on top of the fifty-four thousand. Uh, I mean, can you see my frustration with the fact that we're throwing money away, but it's, it's like it's not our money? Well, let's fix this, what, we can't fix something as small as that in Davidson County that we can provide that service here, even if it's via the health department?
You and I actually, um, I had the very good fortune to talk with you about this before I was even put in place because as you said, this has been something that has been on your mind for quite some time. So we did some research at the health department and the reason that we can't provide methadone through the health department is the pharmacy license is just astronomical and cost and security and things like that. As you said, um, transporting the people to Concord, I was very surprised when you told me about that almost three years ago and I couldn't believe it. So I did some research on my own and you're right, we do not have a Medicaid facility located within the borders of Davidson County that does methadone, suboxone, anything like that, Medicaid, um, treatment therapy. So we're transferring people out. In my thirty thousand foot level discussion with the treatment facilities that we do have here, and they are not, they don't see Medicaid patients, it's a cash paying system, that is an expensive operation. They have doctors, um, psychologists, social workers, I don't even know how many employees they have, but the way they do it is because people pay cash a day, so that's how they're funded. Um, when Trey Sutton came, when Dale and Scott had Trey Sutton come from Cardinal, we shared with him our frustration that we don't have a Medicaid facility here for treatment. But that's, we, we told Cardinal that we want one here, we explained to them that our residents are going to Cardinal and it's frustr- uh, excuse me, Concord, and it's frustrating, and he said that he was taking it back with him, um.
And I've heard that for three years.
I bet you have, yes sir. Um, we can't afford to do one here with fifty-four thousand dollars though, um, or sixty-four thousand dollars. And I guess that's y'all's decision, that's the Commissioner's.
Well, that's not including the cost of the treatment, the fifty-four thousand just for transportation.
Exactly, yes sir.
Yeah, so it's a lot more than the fifty-four thousand and what it costs, but I mean, that's just an example of why I'm so frustrated because there's things we, we should be able to do, that we're just not doing. You know, we pass something and we move on to something else and it doesn't matter if it works or not, it doesn't matter if it costs citizens or not. And that's, that's my frustration.
So you say you take that fifty-four plus this sixty-three and then you're heading to getting somewhere?
Well, that's just two we know about, so, I mean, how much more is out there? We need to be more efficient with the monies that's been expended, you know, for, for these programs and what we're, the treatment, what we're supposed to be doing with the money. And you got people out there needing treatment and we're wasting money on something else, you know, it's just, it's frustrating.
You know, when you talk statistics, when you're talking about fifty-four thousand dollars just for transportation, what, what is that, per person?
No, that's fifty-four thousand dollars for, to, to pay these people to, to transport them to Concord, that takes something we should be able to do here and save that fifty-four thousand.
I said, the fifty-four thousand dollars, is that per person that goes to Concord or what?
How many people were there, that's what he's asking him.
I, I don't know, I've never seen the stats.
No, we don't know how many people it is.
So it could be thousands of people.
Nine, eight thousands.
Well, I know that, but.
One of the problems they can deal with though, if you're gonna have the transportation system, if you're gonna have Medicaid, you can't.
Right.
You can't pick and choose, you have to do what Medicaid says.
If we got Medicaid, we've got to provide that transportation to, to Concord.
When you get those grants from the federal government, they come with strange.
I'm saying it's fifty-four thousand, don't come out of that, does it?
No, uh, what, if we could provide the service here, we would save the fifty-four thousand.
What fifty-four thousand, that's what?
That's, that's what the cost is for transportation.
The cost is who?
Yeah, even if the person decides to drive, we, we send a van down, if I understand, do you know how that system works?
Yeah, I know how, I'm on transportation.
When you, Commissioner Shale, I believe Scott has the numbers on that program.
Okay.
Okay, is it still fifty-four or is that decree? And what is the cost of that per year?
That's what I was leading up to, when you say fifty-four.
All right, don't we pay, if a per- if a person drives himself, don't we give them so much per mile? When did you take that away?
Good job.
So how much is the cost per year now? Because at that time, it was around fifty-four, that might have been included, all that.
Surely a van's not, surely we don't have a van hired for fifty-four cent a mile because. Fifty-four cent a mile, the government gives me that just to drive my own vehicle, so they're gonna. Yeah, it's gotta be more than fifty-four cent a mile, you don't.
About this whole issue of.
So you're looking at options to offset that?
We try.
So still the option's not here in, in the county, I know it's in Winston-Salem or, so could you find out how much that van, uh, costs a day? Tony, okay? Fell asleep. Yeah, I'd like to know how much that costs a day because like I say, I wouldn't think it'd be fifty-four cent a mile, I think they would charge us a dollar a mile or a dollar and a half.
I know that a couple, a few, a couple of years ago, when I asked for these figures, the figures were submitted to me that it was, the cost was fifty-four thousand dollars a year at that time. Okay.
Do you know how many people use that, and that's something else I'd like to have too.
As far as the number of folks that are on the van?
That's right.
It varies.
Yeah, but again, do we know?
They, they drop off, they don't go, they find their own way, um, which we don't reimburse for, uh, but it could be half dozen. I think it's up, it ranges between six and eight, maybe ten at the most.
Yeah, but Scott, total users, I think is what Commissioner gets.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Is it a hundred people a year, individuals that's using this, is it fifty?
Unique individuals.
Are we tracking that, are we tracking that?
It would all be on the, on the, um, manifests for the transportation, you know, we have to verify every trip that everybody takes and there would be a list of folks that are on that van every single day.
What time does the van leave and what time, do you know, tell me a little bit about this, cause.
Early in the morning, they used to pick up here, I wouldn't say they pick up across the street now. They park over there at the transportation area, pick them up in the morning, go down, boom, they're there.
So there's nobody.
An hour, an hour, and then they're back. But again, this is a program, they don't really get counseling, which from what we've heard about successful programs as far as detox and, and sort of lowering that, um, wean those folks off. A critical piece of that is, uh, counseling and, and that, that aspect of it, the methadone doesn't provide that. As a matter of fact, we had, um, the local provider, the Lexington Treatment Associates and Thomasville Treatment Associates, we got them on the phone when we were doing an, um, fatality review for a child that died, both parents on methadone. Um, we got them on the phone while we were doing that review and, um, they said they were mandated to do, I think it was twenty minutes a week. Twenty minutes a week is enough. Uh, but suboxone, for example, the Nazareth does, uh, it's a requirement and if you show up with dirty tests, then you're kicked out of the program, but there, it's a requirement, I want to say it's probably in, at least an hour a week, um, of that counseling.
So you're saying when they go to Concord, they don't get any treatment at all?
They get the methadone, right, and they get a minimal amount of, of face to face with the counselor, with, with the search workers.
So I think what you're saying possibly Commissioner Shale is, if I'm reading this right, is possibly that's where the treatment needs to be, where they're going to get their, that's where their drug rehab should come in, where they're going to get the treatment for, for drugs, correct?
Yeah.
Is that not where you'd put the two and two together, is, they're there already?
These people can't just show up and get on the van, can they? They've got to be referred by something, don't they?
Right, they have to be accepted into the program.
Who they are, who are the, what, what are the entities that refer them to these?
The cloud center is the agency that they go to down in, down in Concord. So it'd be the same as anything, any other kind of treatment, mental health, such as abuse or otherwise, you'd go through Cardinal and then McLeod would do, I'm assuming, an assessment, um, to see where they're at, how much they're using, those kinds of things, and then they would accept them into the program.
The, the problem that I see with that is, is, yeah, I, I do agree that where you're going to get your fix or treatment, if you want to call it that, uh, would be the place to do the counseling. Those places, like you, somebody said here before, that they start you out at a low dose and then they work your way up. But we all know that if you're gonna come off of something, you need to be at your dosage and then work your way down. And I know one who is off of it now said that he had to fight like crazy to get them to not give him a, his normal dose. He had to argue with them until they would give him a lesser dose and a lesser dose and a lesser dose. Um, they don't want to do that, but now the counselor's sitting there trying to talk to you while they're there for the, whatever it may be, a week. But then the salesperson is sitting there pushing it and it is nothing but a legal drug system, that's all it is.
It is not a system that lets itself to people get in the matter.
Thank you, and so to ask them to put something like that in there to a, a counselor, it, it, yeah, I just don't see that happening because it is a private entity, that's their job is to sell the stuff and push and push and push because whoever owns is making money. And they don't want to answer that because the true answer, I think, if you go out there right now, in the mornings, I think, I open the doors at five, I think it is, five o'clock in the morning, then people's lined up out the door, if you were to go up there and pull them and say, how long have you been doing this? It, it, years, I mean, many of them, five, six, seven, eight years. Well, I mean, it doesn't take that long to come off of something. Uh, I, I mean, a, a normal, you know, thing, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, we've been coming around here from methadone to start out with the drug.
I agree.
And, and, and the whole thing is.
Then we move this forward.
This position she's talking about would work with all these people and they'd work with all of these things. It's, the, the, the needle exchange was just a minor thing compared to what the case manager position's supposed to do. They would work with, with methadone.
Do we have any more questions for the, these folks here? Thank you.
I, I would, Phil's got something to say.
I would just say this, this is such a big animal, any one thing you do is not gonna work. It does take a variety of things, it takes the law enforcement enforcing and doing what they do. It may take a position like this, it may take trying to get more resources and counselors and detox in place. It takes the proactive side of it, so that doesn't answer anything about what we ought to do, what y'all ought to do. Um, but I think any one thing is not gonna be successful, it definitely is gonna take a variety of approaches. And I think that's where the, the, uh, being in a box, the attempt is to get a bunch of different stakeholders together to try to come up with a plan and get a commitment from, all right, schools are gonna do this as far as education, health department's gonna do this, the providers are gonna do this, law enforcement's gonna do this. I don't think it came out that way, or maybe those ideas are still there, but I think it is, is, you're talking about a multi-headed problem.
From your position, you and Dale, from your, your position, do you think, is it your belief that the services that are available, that the information network to those services is so spread out that it makes it very difficult to, to, to focus where the attention needs to be for a, a, a person who needs those services? Cause that, that's one of the things, I've seen, I always felt like we needed a hotline or, or hotspot or something that does, that sends it where it needs to go.
Here is, um, my take on it, if you, if you want it. Um, when I came to work here in two thousand and seven, all I heard about was mental health services used to be easily accessible here in the county when it was right across the parking lot. With substance abuse services we have now, we still, we use Cardinal Innovations for the Medicaid piece. It would be wonderful to have something local that we had control of, to be able to refer somebody to, to get some service. This is an opportunity to do that, I feel so strongly about it and I don't know that it'll work, but I believe we have to do something that, try and then probably, like Scott says, it's multifaceted all over the place. I'm willing to give a position in my department, we have a clerical support position that we don't have field right now. I'd be willing to transfer it to the health department for helping, I guess you could say, sweeten the, the offer of absorbing this within the county. That's how strongly I believe we need something started here in Davidson County, much like the Hope initiative, and this is a way to get it started. But I'm willing to give a position that we don't have field right now for next year to help with this issue.
Can I say one more thing and then I'm done, I promise. I'll give you a good model for how this could look, is what Lexington, what LBD has done with domestic violence. They took that on as an initiative that they were gonna focus on and they got everybody involved in it. They got family services to come to the table, they got the DA, the court system involved in it to prosecute those folks. They, they had a good model that they were working from, from, that started it happening. But they took that on and got the right people involved, they met every week, every other week, and then everybody committed to doing what they needed to do to solve that problem. I'm not saying it's not domestic violence in this town, but people know what to do and they've got that fifty B that they can do remotely, only you have to go in front of the magistrate. You're remotely from family services, they've got essentially a one-stop shop at family services to deal with that issue. That's the kind of model that I think needs to be in place to deal with this issue.
And that's kind of what the Hope initiative does, you have to have the DA involved, you have to have the, uh, law enforcement folks involved, the clerk of court, uh, needs to be involved. It's, it is multifaceted and that's, that's the reason that it works is because you've got all of those folks involved. But there still has to be that one person that coordinates between all of those different, um, agencies in order to keep them happy.
I thought that's really why, what we were contributing to, and I'm not disputing that at all, it's a Cardinal four. I mean, I, I thought they were the one that's supposed to be the manager of this, of, of, of this thing. So why do we need to create another? So why do we need to create another line of, of, of the bureaucracy if we're already paying somebody to tend to this?
Unfortunately, and Scott can answer this probably as, as, as better, as good as I can. Um, there are, how many counties? Sixteen? Twenty, with sixteen when I was there. Twenty counties that Cardinal is involved with and that Cardinal has to, has to, uh, divide the monies to, but, um, they will help. Cardinal has helped in several instances by, well, day mark, but we got that with no massive, uh, money from the county. And, um, and they do those kinds of things, but, uh, position wise, they depend upon the counties to do that.
I'm ju, I'm just wondering, what is the purpose of Cardinal?
To manage Medicaid dollars.
You as a DA, to manage the Medicaid.
They're in between the money and the services.
Uh, you have the authority from the DSS to contract with a provider yourself without going through Cardinal, don't you?
For, for what? I mean, it could be.
That's what we did when we had our mental health department, that we did it ourselves.
But we contract with Goodwill for services for employment, we contract with these companies that do the Medicaid transportation. So again, for foster care, you know, license, um, residential group, homes, certain.
Okay.
How much do we pay Cardinal a year, don't we?
Two hundred and some thousand, isn't it? Not a certain.
It's, it's eight hundred thousand, and we deduct out a certain amount to take care of mental health ward guardianships. So it ends up being about seven hundred, a little bit less than seven hundred thousand goes to.
I was thinking six. Uh, I believe, uh, earlier we had talked about, um, having plenty of participants, uh, over in a jail. Uh, currently, right now as we speak, uh, there's three hundred and sixty-seven in a two hundred and ninety-nine capacity jail over there. Uh, and we all know that many of them are addicts.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, and I don't know how we need to go about postponing or canceling this, but three commissioners had a ten o'clock appointment for another committee this morning, and this is dragging out like beating a dead horse, we're probably not, we're not gonna be able to do that. And I was just wondering if, since we can't vote on any of this this morning, we're just doing this for discussion if we can kind of move things along a little bit, or we'll be here till five o'clock.
Yeah. Okay, is, is everybody finished with this?
Yeah.
Okay, any decision to be made at this point won't be us?
Since you, since you noticed that meeting, are we in violation of anything by not?
No specific time, it was just immediately following this meeting.
Okay.
I got another one at ten too, though, I had two on my calendar at ten, believe it or not.
Okay, let's go to, uh, the first option, provide additional funding for rescue squads.
At ten o'clock.
Anybody wanna open that up?
Uh, which one, funding for rescue squads?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I mean, we all, we all know that I do this every year. Um, I, I, and I believe this year, Casey, you've got how much for Davidson, how much for Thomasville?
Same as it is this year, uh, seventeen, five, and twenty-seven, five.
Okay, I mean, again, I would advocate that we move those up, uh, just as I have before. We see what they've done with their finances, we've seen that they've come back around, they've, they've got their head in the right spot. Uh, both boards have, uh, got people from, uh, outside their organization on their board helping them. Uh, I believe Zeb has seen all, and Casey has seen their finances. Uh, call per volume, uh, is probably the lowest in the county. So, um, I, I would like to see both of those, uh, go up a little bit. I don't know that I would go to four hundred and twenty-five thousand, but I, I could easily, you know, see seventy thousand, twenty for Thomasville, and fifty for Davidson.
Say that the, uh, the Davidson Rescue people that showed up at the last meeting, I was very impressed with where they're at now. I think they're on the right track. Uh, I'm not sure why the Thomasville people didn't show up for that one. Uh, I thought they'd taken advantage of every chance they could to get their face in front of us, but, uh, before we do anything on Thomasville, I'd like to see that they're in front of us with numbers and, and proof that they've kind of gotten their, their act in better order to, to please the board. I know Davidson has made quite a few changes, and it looks like they're on a, a better track. I'm, I'm not opposed to give a Davidson more money, but it's, it seems like we would, we, we'd want to give them more than we would Thomasville considering they seem to have taken our advice and started to turn things around versus Thomasville.
Uh, and that's why if we're at seventeen and, or whatever, that's why I said Thomasville from seventeen to twenty, and then from Davidson from what, twenty-seven, five to fifty?
Gotcha.
Is what I was saying. Davidson has really made some huge strides, they're doing a lot of work, um, so. But Thomasville has as well, it, it, I don't know why they wasn't here. Um, I know their board president's the one that handles their finances and he teaches, so I'm not exactly sure, but it should, looks like he'd have taken a night off.
He did come by here, did he?
I didn't see.
Not that day.
No.
What, uh, Casey, have you got anything from, uh, Davidson or any of the rest of them asking for any more money?
Yeah, their, their two requests combined totaled one twenty-five on the page there.
Okay, so that's a new request?
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah.
Now, some of that, again, is, I, I may, particularly for the county one, and, you know, Danny and them know they were here, they may have sent that prior to making some of these changes to the net where they don't, you know, they're not doing that anymore. So, um, it appears they may have gotten somewhat leveled off, uh, with them from that point on.
But that is a recent request, because I remember this amount being asked for a year or so ago.
Yeah, it's, it was roughly the same, but I say, it, I think it came before, after the leadership changed in the county rescue squad, and then after that, you know, they didn't resubmit another request, but I think there was some changes made, drastic changes made.
The most recent that I've heard from them was fifty thousand would, would help them out quite a bit, uh, for Davidson. I know both, both departments have some vehicles that probably need a little maintenance to them, um, and some equipment that needs updating.
So Commissioner Cross, you're asking, you're looking, recommending three thousand increase from who presently budgeted?
For Thomasville.
And, uh, uh.
Twenty thirty-five, yeah.
One, one, one thing about the Davidson Rescue Squad is it was pointed out, a couple of the problems that they had was pointed out by the board, uh, a couple of years, uh, last year I think it was, and they've made the necessary changes. They, they've gone back to the, what, what originally was the mission of the Davis County Rescue Squad, and they've done pretty much about everything we've asked them to do. Uh, and I, I would, I would support the fifty thousand for Davidson Rescue. And, uh, I'm sort of like Commissioner, uh, Barrett, I'm sort of wondering why Davis, uh, Thomasville didn't come?
Well, they did in February to budget retreat, but they did not come the other week. But see, Davidson has made some improvements since February as well, when they changed the net, which really changed everything up, and so that's why they came back and presented again. See, Thomasville didn't have that, and, um, so they didn't, I guess they didn't come back. Uh, Zeb, uh, Hannah over here just kind of, uh, reminded me of that, so.
Casey did, have, have you gotten, uh, financial statements and budgets for both entities?
Um, I looked through Thomasville's, Commissioner McClure asked me this a couple of weeks ago when we were, um, and I pulled together some things and looked at it, Thomasville's did, they gave me their bank account basically, which is, kind of goes through and sees the running balance, if you will, so. But I read through their justification, and Commissioner Cross is right, a large part of it is, basically, the claim is we need additional funds to help, you know, help replace aging equipment, uh, because we don't have enough money to do the service plus replace the equipment, is bottom line, I think. Both entities are, seem to be having struggles with some of the equipment pieces.
Yeah, Thomasville has one first responder vehicle that, uh, I, I think the transmission's messed up, it can't get over like thirty-five or forty-five miles an hour, or something, something's wrong with the transmission. Uh, so, so they've got some equipment issues. Now Davidson had some equipment issues on one that we know of would, would talked about last time they were here, um, and Rowan County Rescue repaired it and fixed it for them and gave it back to them at no cost. Um, and, and so even Rowan County seemed that they had a problem and was able to help.
So you did receive financial statements and a budget?
I did receive the budgets, and the, the financial statements, again, for me, the, the bank accounts was, was actually better information to me than even having somewhat of an audit in a way, cause I got to see what they're spending money out every month and what's, how much is coming in, so.
What about Davidson Rescue?
Same thing, I mean, I got, got to take a peek at all of it. I think they's actually sent, um, more of an audit type statement, uh, that they had.
And the checking account, how many months did you get?
Uh, several, like twelve, a whole year's worth.
Really?
Yeah.
Pretty current?
Yeah.
So is the balance going up or down?
Um, it, it moves, it appears overall, um, because of the net, they're, they're running the same concept over there, they may be struggling a little bit more than the county piece. But I think, I think their claim, again, is helping them with, um, their claim basically is if you help us with the equipment, we can handle the service.
Okay, do, we, we, do we need a motion to, uh, Commissioner?
We're just gonna put this on the budget, but, um, well, on the budget discussion for the twelfth, but didn't Davidson, uh, recently eliminate a service?
They, they stopped doing the, those, uh, those, the net piece of the transport piece that was causing them to go down.
Do we have numbers of, of, uh, how much that will save them and, and put on their bottom line?
I, I don't, um, Danny Samms is here today, and, uh, uh, I, I don't other that, they have just conversations with them, it appears that that leveled them off, meaning that they're kind of back at their break even point. Um, I don't know that they have the funds maybe to keep replacing equipment on an ongoing basis.
All right.
They was putting them in the hole.
But that, that stopped the hole, if that makes sense, it stopped the bleeding.
And, and it's my, and, and it's, it's my understanding that Thomasville is still doing the same service that puts them in the hole?
Well, no, no, Thomasville's not doing that service.
Okay. I remember them discussing it, yeah.
Yeah, they wanted to.
As far as our budget, um, you all saw how we've had lost at least sixty thousand a year for trying to keep the net running. Um, the budget I have to make is take, um, is of course trying to prepare for the Viper radios that are coming to maintain the equipment that we already have, and so to be able to supervise the services, we also have more. And just to maintain, we did do very well this year with our fundraiser, and if we can get back in with United Way, that's gonna help us as well, but any, any raise from you all will help us maintain and continue to get back on our feet. And we're struggling to get back from this big mess.
I understand.
So that's sort of why we asked for the fifty thousand, just to see what we can get done this year, and then maybe next year we may not need that much, because we're still coming out of a hole.
Yeah, how many Viper radios do you have to have?
I think ten, we just had to have.
Yeah, we had to have ten. What we were looking at was getting the portable radios, we talked to, um, Terry Bailey and the committee that was there, and one of the, the reps that was there representing the radios, the, uh, radio that's mounted in the truck is only good when you're in that truck.
Mm-hmm.
When you step out of that truck, you'll wait for the radio.
Right.
And him, they recommended the Walkings, an officer would have Walkings.
Right, and what, what was the amount of that? Uh, just the radios, do you, do you remember?
The ones that we got initially from Walt, um, R S, I think it was like thirty-seven, five. But then the gentleman that we met with Terry, the communication man, he, he might know what it is, but we didn't know for sure. That was optional, I think, I forgot.
Right.
And, um, I guess so, hopefully next year this time we'll be better off, because maybe we have a whole lot of equipment that we have in that we don't need, and so, but we find it probably will be for four X R.
Right, I don't have a bit of problem with, um, with trying to, uh, provide the money for the radio system, because there's no sense in, in having a new radio system and then having people not on it, so.
All we had talked about, the one was maybe try to buy, like, maybe four this year, four next year.
I understand.
Like I said, we, we're prol, prol in this huge hole that we're in, and so we're doing it.
Thank you very much.
So this, this would be a one-time request at this point, at this level?
Well, um, got a question for you, Jarvis, that they may need, now, there was different people, Kenwood and several different people that could supply radios, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
What, what, uh, what type of radio did?
We really not sat down and just actually picked a radio yet, um, I think Terry Bailey's here, um.
I think it was from Motorola.
Motorola, but there were several reps that were there, and it's just like if you go buy a Ford or Chevrolet, is Motorola's gonna be a hot radio, but the other one was, the radios were cheaper.
Like I say, I know Kenwood, I think, there's two or three different.
Yeah.
The money that, that, the county is receiving from the fire committee, safety committee went to it, um, that money was only allowed for the fire departments.
Yeah, not rescue.
Rescue squads were rejected on that, on the kind of, the way the money was set up through a grant.
As part of the grant funding.
Rescue squads, so we weren't, even though we are part of the safety association, and, and attend the meetings, we wouldn't be benefiting from that radio there, so it'd be up to, to us as an individual organization to put us on radios.
We can talk to Motorola about them getting on the discount pricing, we got locked in.
That would be good.
And so they can get the benefit of that as well, I don't know why they wouldn't be able to. Um, they certainly can buy Kenwood's, but it gets back to that whole conversation we've had about us doing that where it's, you know, certain folks are gonna have to use Motorola radios in certain parts of the county, so I don't know, you know.
I see.
Because, um, I think, what is it, Thomasville's, they're on, they're a, uh, them and, uh, what is it, the, not the, the ones over at Ledford?
Uh, Wahlberg.
Yeah, they are not, they're exclusively using Motorola stuff. So, we, they're also part of, they're also locked in on part of the jurisdiction that's over in, uh, High Point? Yeah, in Forsite, that don't allow Kenwood radios on their system. So you're gonna be locked out, and so it'd probably be better for them to get Motorola's, be able to talk to everybody.
I keep hearing that, but there's a federal law that says you can't do that.
I, I don't know what that is.
You cannot lock in just a one type of Motorola, or Motorola or Kenwood, and I've, I've spoken.
But they can buy a Kenwood, they just wouldn't be able to talk to a jurisdiction.
Well, no, you can still talk to a jurisdiction, cause there's a federal law that says a jurisdiction cannot lock out all but one type.
They're doing it.
That's the P twenty-five.
They're doing it.
If it's the P twenty-five federal.
If it's their own radio system, they can.
Yeah, right, if, if they own their own radio system, they can pick and choose who's on it. One more quick thing about the bank account, month one for twenty seventeen for Thomasville, I don't wanna, get, I mean, they ended up at that end of that month at about twenty-three thousand dollars left in the bank account. By the month twelve, December, the end of the full year, they were at about twenty-six, so they're about level, basically.
That sounds like their checking account's going up, so as long as it's going up.
Just slightly, but I mean, it's, overall, I would call that level, you know what I mean? They're able to pay their bills and keep going. I, I see his point where maybe they can't replace a, a large amount of equipment quickly. If a car's got a transmission out, that's probably a big expense if you only got twenty-seven thousand left in the bank, plus run the service, so I see, I see the issue.
There's a lot of small businesses would like that in the bank.
I understand, I understand that.
Okay.
So.
Okay, any, okay, uh.
So you say this is a one-time request here for, yeah?
But again, I, I went out and I wasn't having next year.
Um, like I said, one of the things was that when United Way, United's this past year.
I got you.
On the count of past history of our checking account, and, uh, since then, I said that new officers come in, took the advice of the county manager, assistant county manager, and from Yola, when we went back and, um, changed all of that, we saw that, and doing a audit of our books, that, that net was really draining us.
Yep, how many volunteers y'all have?
Right now, we got forty-five.
Forty-five?
And by stopping the net, our insurance cut in half, when we were paying almost twelve thousand dollars a year for workers' comp.
Six now.
It's noise added three.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so more than half. A fourth.
It looks like, and, and thank y'all, appreciate it, it looks like what we're going to do here and looking at is, is, is whether or not we're gonna discuss this more, if we move it on. Let's move it for discussion on the budget meeting. Yeah, we got three or four here that's gotta go to different meetings here, so why don't, i- is there anything on here that absolutely should not be moved forward? I think maybe we can deal with that, or, or, or Casey would.
Well, that, and one more quick thing, Mr. Jarvis asked earlier, the TRIP funding for the prior year, fifty-eight, nine?
Fifty-eight, nine.
Is the total for this.
So you're saying these people can bring their presentations forward to the ne- next meeting? Cause it looks like that's where we're going with this anyway.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I, I hate for them to keep coming back over and over, but I'm sure they're good with that in order to make their presentations.
What about the additional fire grant? I don't remember. What is that about?
Commissioner Cross, um, probably can answer that better than I can. It's, it's an additional position within county government that would be probably help us do a lot of more in-depth auditing and help, uh, with the fire districts. Also help them get, I guess, additional funding, outside funding other than their taxes. Uh, but it was an idea that came from, uh, there. We've had it on a couple of retreats now. We've talked about it. So I left it on the list because it's.
Did that something we talked about last year and we didn't?
We did, we did. And it's not that, again, a lot of times we come out of the retreats, why these things stay on the list is, it's kinda like today. We don't, we don't arrive at a complete decision. So, you know, I hate to take them off the list when we haven't really kinda decided yet or maybe whether we're moving forward.
Uh, speaking to our, uh, uh, future sheriff, um, he actually will be coming to the board next year asking for somebody to help write grants for the, his, his department. So maybe it's something we could look at for the next budget season to intermingle all of it together as one, one position that will be looking for law enforcement and, uh, uh, first responder grants. So if y'all wanna move that to next year and discuss that with the future sheriff.
Okay. Can I have a motion a second to place to approve this budget on for the June twelfth agenda?
Most for what?
To move the, to, to, to move this budget on for the June twelfth? Okay, no motion. I mean, no second, okay. Uh, and then we, we've got, cause we've got some issues here and we're gonna have to discuss it on the twelfth.
Well, one way we can handle it is we just.
Unless you're ready to move, remove something.
Yeah, we can just move the budget as it is on and this sheet still be sitting there. Some of the issues, as Mr. Cross just alluded to, maybe one can come off because it can be talked about in a year. I think it looked, from my ears, what I hear is there's still some discussion about the rescue squads maybe. And, um, I don't know about trip, if that's gonna be discussed. But anyway.
Yeah, it's gonna be discussed.
Bring it back up as part of the change and we can change it then and have it approved.
Okay.
This is when we discuss this again?
Next Tuesday.
And, uh, yeah, and we all received what's there. So if there's any information anybody would like to provide us, like those stats that were, we've talked about.
Chris got a nice book here already for us.
Those stats we were talking about. If we get those back, so we look at them.
You're just gonna email those to us, right? Cause I don't have time to look it over Tuesday night with.
Okay, can I have a motion a, a second to adjourn?
I'll make a move.
Yep, second.
This'll be some good reading till next week's meeting.
All in favor? Yeah, yeah, it will. Uh, uh, that's one thing I wanted to look at too, Lance.